Open at 7:33. I'm Heather Von Mering, I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Today, the Planning Board has a very interesting agenda. We are starting, we're going to talk a little bit about some updates of some things that are going on and update the full board on things that we've been working on. From there, we will be going into 654 Main Street presentation and public comment will be welcome after the team does a short presentation. Thereafter, at 8:20, we are going to discuss the master plan. The Planning Board has received a handful of comments from residents and also are going to be taking comments from the audience and feedback, and then the Planning Board will be discussing a handful of those with each other. Thereafter, we'll do 9 o'clock, new business that was not noted time of the posting. 9:10, we'll go into executive session and hopefully we'll adjourn before 10:00 PM. Just so everyone knows, if you speak, you are being recorded by WinCam. And moving forward, we, today, we received meeting minutes regarding Converse Place from the team, the design team. And I think in our next agenda, I will bring these in and we can review them as a planning board and make edits to them as we would our own meeting minutes and make sure that they, we are in agreement with those. Does that sound good?
I did already send feedback just to Brian and he, I'm asking him, so if you're collecting it, that's another way to do it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can collect it individually and then...
Circulate it and then let's look at it, maybe that would be more, mine or it's just one.
The packet, sure.
Okay, so we'll do that, we'll give you our feedback, you'll make the edits and then we'll put it in the packet for review at our next meeting. Okay, I had a, in response to a lot of the comic comments regarding the master plan, I had a wonderful conversation today with Michelle Tassi, who is HR but also is the staff that works with DAC. And in that conversation, we'll talk more about it when we get to the master plan because it does talk about accessibility and universal design and various things like that, but really a discussion about getting the DAC more active in our site plan and special permit reviews going forward and get their feedback on that and accessibility and ways that we can condition those projects to make them so they're really accessible. So we'll be looking to have a joint meeting with the DAC in the next coming and start bringing them in. The other discussion is putting a liaison to work with them a little bit, or have, give, ask them to have a liaison that works with us, or vice versa, and both. So that's an option that is on, but so Brian and I will look to get the DAC on our agenda in the next, yep.
You want to say what the DAC is?
The Disability Advisory...
Access, no, access.
Access Commission.
Access Commission. There you go.
On the spot.
On the spot, you know.
Here's the president of Mexico.
So Brian, do you want to go through your updates?
So, one update is that we have, we're going to be re-advertising for the Recording Secretary, both for Planning Board and for the Historical Commission, we've been out of one for quite some time, so that's been some work in the making, so that's happening.
Hang on, so as a follow-up, are we going to be looking at minutes or getting some even really short summary of minutes for all the meetings that haven't happened?
We, I do not have, I don't know how that's going to work yet, but one option that was supposed to be happening was that we were, whoever we would hire could potentially work by at first going through meeting minutes. Or, I mean, that's one option, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but between Diab and myself, I think we have a lot of them.
Good, oh no.
But I don't, some of them?
As long as we have the main motions, I do want...
I'm going to take the fifth on that.
...by the board, that, this is, it's a compliance issue. I agree, the Boston Globe, as you all know, and Weston really has gotten called on not having their minutes. It had to do with the minutes, it had to do with how they were amended from an open session, I mean, I'm sorry, an executive session. It ultimately went to the Attorney General's office and they found that there, it was the Select Board, not the Planning Board, but that they were in violation. So this was not about taking minutes, but how they approved their minutes and then deleted something from their minutes. So it's not directly relevant to our practice, but we need minutes. And I'm, I just feel as if that was something I always, even without a planner or any staff that we always had, so I just ask that we figure out how to get those minutes.
So I'll talk to the clerk about the best possible way that we could be compliant.
Be compliant.
Yep.
Sorry, it's tough, but we all, who are, it's part of what we're supposed to be doing.
And then, hopefully by the end of this week, we're going to be getting a design consultant, an on-call design consultant, like an umbrella contract that for whenever we need them over to the end of this fiscal year. We have about 10,000 to do that, so it's, it's going to be a not-to-acccede contract, not-so-whatever doesn't, but, so that's supposed to happen by the end of this week.
And can you confirm with counsel that assuming, and it's understood there may not be, but assuming there's a filing that this, anything related to a specific project can be charged on, as peer review?
Okay. I don't know how, why we wouldn't be able to...
It's a cost to the town, right?
Say that again?
It's a cost to the town, we're supposed to be able to cover our costs through 53G.
Right. Are you, so you, I mean, are you talking about getting reimbursed?
Anything we use.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then with that, March 17th or March 24th, pending our schedule, we want to bring in other designers to interview.
Good.
March when?
March 17th or March 24th. So we have more than one design consultant on call.
So by the end of the week, we will have a single one on call, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And that is our...
That, that is the one that is going to be doing...
We can name the person.
Yeah, yeah. It's Dennis.
Yes, we'll be doing Converse Place.
Okay, okay.
The goal is to get, and then a different entity for...
Well, maybe, but I mean, we ought to have, we ought to have options, right?
Those were the updates at the moment.
So a question, I know you were on vacation, but Johnson Road, any kind of follow-up?
No.
You heard nothing from legal?
Do something?
Yeah, yeah, no, I still have not heard anything from that email.
For the audience, we've had a house that's been abandoned, it's, and there is an attorney, the state has an abandoned housing initiative and we've not pursued, Brian did send one email, I guess to the Attorney General's office, but hasn't heard anything back, I guess it was just no response?
No, but, and then also to legal counsel, so, and that's, yeah.
Both, but I think a follow-up to the 8G's office as well.
Sure, no.
MBTA, we've got a public meeting, anything that is not part of the public meeting, we...
The only thing I know is that, I believe it's March 4th.
Yes, starts at 6:30 and it's at McCall School.
Thank you for that. And it's talking about the 90% design, I don't believe that he is ready to put the 90% design out to the public yet.
You can't get, you can't review the 90% design up in the manager's office, there's a set up there if you'd like to view, view the MBTA's drawings, but there's very little information on the Design Review Subcommittee for the MBTA knows very little as well, there's nothing new to update, except we have the meeting.
And then local historic district?
So the next, there hasn't been an update since, since we met two weeks ago, which was that we are trying to get on the Select Board's agenda in order to talk to them about an update. And ask for some guidance.
I think at some point, we also wanted a chance to talk about it, so maybe it's an agenda item, because I think we also, as a planning board, have ideas about how to support the effort.
Whichever?
The local historic district.
I was still on that, the MBTA though, in the last, we, the Planning Board did take a position and voice it in the public hearing, I don't know if we wanted to or not.
I think I...
It's kind of, we just kind of, we just got it thrown on us today, pretty much, I got the notice of it.
Yeah.
I have nothing that I could say, be coherent.
Okay.
Speak as a representative. Okay, I think we should keep going.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go to 654 Main Street, the presentation and public comment, starting with the presentation. We'll, I know that there's a lot of residents here who I think want to speak to it or have questions regarding it, so why don't we...
Plus the board.
What?
And the board.
Yeah, and the board. So, who do you want, like 10 minutes?
Honestly, 10.
We'd be given, yeah, we were given, we'd given 45 minutes, but obviously, yeah, that's, yeah, well, I want more, yeah, a lot, so they said 10?
Yeah, 10.
And then we have to speak and then the audience.
Hello, welcome, if you could announce your name, your company, that would be wonderful. There's a microphone next to you, and go on.
Good evening, my name is Paul Sutley, I'm with Admela Yora, the proponent.
Just going to ask Brian if we can pull up the presentation, I'm not sure where I would find it.
Yeah, right there.
Right here? Okay, thank you, all right, I'm going to go to here, thank you. Okay.
My name is Ted Tolukeyan, I'm an architect from Tolukey in Tolukey.
My name is Larry Beals, I'm with Beals Associates, we're the civil engineers on the project, and I'd like to make a couple of other introductions too. On the ownership side, John Steenbruger is with us behind me, and Ian Glassby. Also, President, Colin is here, who's one of the architects who had a lot of input into this presentation tonight. We didn't bring in an attorney tonight because we didn't think that was necessary, but our main point, and we were hoping to recap for Heather because she wasn't here last time, so we intended to do that, but we can probably speed through more quickly.
She is, I'd hate to, sorry, she, I know for a fact she is actually watching right now.
Oh, great.
Oh, she is.
Great, great.
But she also has the PowerPoint show, so I think, let's, we want to make sure the audience can speak and that we can speak.
Sure, so just so I'm clear on the timing, what, how much time do we have, I heard three different...
You have 10 minutes.
10 minutes.
10 minutes for your presentation, then we'll go into questions, public comment.
So Ted is clearly the most important person on our team to make this presentation, so I'll stop and he can start.
We'll go quickly and, and I think, I'm just going to cover really briefly what we'd like to go through for the purposes of the audience and also for Heather who's not here but via the television screen. We're going to do a brief overview of the 28th January presentation, we're going to do a recap of some of the Planning Board's primary recommendations that we received in our last meeting, and those were guiding points for us in the takeaway that we had from our last meeting and that we'd like to share with you today, and those are to review the proposed site plan, the ground floor activation planning around the building, and also the 63 Vine Street facade implementation. And of course, cover next steps and ask for some guidance and request some questions from the audience. These photographs we just, we'll cruise through, of course, very quickly, but they're there just to put presence, I think everybody's aware where it is and the site locations, but in case we have to go back to some of the photographs, this is a pretty good aerial photograph that shows the site, which is 64 Main Street, which is a unique property in its geometry. I think here, let's just take a very quick, brief pause, because this is a great information that we reviewed from the town's guidelines, and they became a lot of our guiding points, which is really to focus, with the takeaways that we received for the Central Business District as well as the Center Cultural District, is really to create a project that focuses on the street interface, activation of the open space system surrounding the site, as well as reinforcing activity at the existing ground plane and enriching, enriching and strengthening public connections. And these became the basis of our work and how we wanted to focus on the initial planning of the project. In our last meeting, we focused on the site as a, as really a activation site, which is a gateway site to the cultural district as well as the Central Business District. Some of the photographs we hear, like try to evoke some of the motions of some of the spaces that we find that are exciting, walkable sidewalks, spaces that support local artists, mixed-use streetscapes, looking for outdoor seating adjacent to the building, as well as supporting local retail and the possibility for some public amenity spaces in public parks. Our analysis led us to extending the green corridor from Elliott Park, looking at some of the residential yards and the relationships, as well as maintaining traffic direction for off-street parking and managing some of the flooding, and of course, connecting the pedestrian circulation at the ground floor retail level and really creating activated mixed-use project. We reviewed two different building massing, these are only en-mass, not designed in terms of the building, and those are generated really around scale, around height and its presence on the streetscape, and we presented a four-story building volume that created a connection to the Joe's Pizza three-story masonry building, tried to create a strong intricate roof line that would create a connection to Wedgwood Place, and then we also looked at a five-story building version that had a setback area at the upper floor, and we reviewed those and we got some comments that the four-story was probably the preferred direction. A substantial part of our conversations were around 63 Vine Street, and we noted some of the comments in the 7.3 Center Business District, District, Section 511 regarding demolition, and we received good feedback from the board around the value of 63 Vine Street and understanding that we may want to include proposals that looked at the value of 63 Vine Street as a transitional element, as well as rebuilding some aspects of the facade. These are some of the takeaways that we received from the board when we met last week. Also, that we were to address the five-story building height and move towards a four-story design with stronger roof lines. We were looking to adjust the building facade to be parallel to Main Street, as well as build space off of Elmwood Avenue, public space, and that was appreciated to evaluate accessible route with a sightline from Main Street. Other comments were looking at widening the Main Street sidewalks and including street trees and a green connection to Elliott Park, as well as some comments from the neighborhood were improving the sightlines at the corner of Main and Vine Streets, particularly around pedestrian vehicular circulation, and as well as look at outdoor Main Street terrace or porch that could potentially become a retail amenity. And these are some of the comments that we received, and we wanted to highlight them as an opportunity for us to incorporate them into our presentation today. So for us, it starts at the ground plane and an opportunity to really build the project from the ground level up, and I think the comments from the Central Business District guidelines were really effective for us to look at a building that was 360 degrees, that had public interface on all sides and allowed for street-wide activity. And what we'd like to do today is present the spaces three-dimensionally and how we're viewing them and how they relate to the ground plane of the building, starting from really the area that is adjacent to 40 Elmwood, and we call this a bit of a pocket park, we like to refer to it as a pocket art park, and this was the public space amenity that we looked, that would create, I'm going to try to use the mouse here as we use it, access from Main Street up Elmwood into this really, I think, very nice little public space amenity area adjacent to a beautiful stone wall, and the aspects around that which were interesting to us is how, how we could look at that as public space that could be a part of the cultural district, cultural district. Things that came to mind were sculptural park, potential for local artists to make a mural, intricate, intricate material transitions in the landscape, and really playing up that stone wall, which is beautiful against the edge, and creating some outdoor speeding, seating and a gathering space, and really a tree canopy that could really create a provocative public space for the community. This is a three-dimensional view that takes you from Main Street, and what we'd like to do is just sort of mute down and the building itself is not designed, but just to show the access that would take you to the park, and you're seeing that sort of space as you move towards it in the way that we're extending some of the brick pavers, an opportunity to create transitional paving and a really sort of, I think, elegant tree canopy. We heard some comments that that maybe area was a little bit darker, and how could that become a vibrant space with the different types of lighting techniques and really making a very unique space that allows you to move around the building? And this is a view that looks you, looks back towards the space, so it's perched up about four or five feet from Main Street, and I think it's an opportunity to create another unique public space in the district that could be shared and enjoyed by all. The second area that we want to look at and really how its relationship, it's really a strong part of the project, is its reciprocal relationship at the ground floor plan, and so we looked at widening the sidewalks by about two to three feet, providing new street trees that would create a strong green connection from Elliott Park to the north. We looking at designing in the future a stronger edge condition that created better visibility around Vine Street, we searched some of those comments from the community earlier, as well as by widening the sidewalk and creating a transition that is necessary because we're in a FEMA floodplain, that we have to create a transition from about 21, 21 and change up to 23.6 because we're in the 100-year flood, and that to do that with a ramp and stair that is really a public space, and the opportunity to create some outdoor seating along the edges that could become, I think, a way to make the social space at the sidewalk level much more activated and connected in that area. So the area, I think some of these images reflect ways that the retail space could have some operable glass walls that create some porosity, indoor/outdoor spaces, looking at public seating and open space edges, and even going to the level that some of the low-impact design opportunities, way plantings could deal with drainage on the sidewalk as well. So this is not the building design, just to be clear, it's just an opportunity to show the beginnings of how street trees could activate this space, how there's a ramping system that would take you to this upper terrace, built up about two feet or a foot and a half is really a unique opportunity to perch out and look down the street and really broaden the streetscape and make a wider connection as you bring into this area. I think it's an opportunity for the retail space to really open up and make a strong connection back to the building and in a way make an outdoor room, an outdoor room that could be activated and porous with its edges, and as you see a little bit more closely by creating this low-impact design and some plantings and the ramp system that takes you up, it really becomes part of the public space, and how some of the seating edges where people could be, could be edge conditions to this platform or other tables and chairs and really engage. And we see this as an opportunity where this wall could be really activated with glass, and we heard some of your comments in an earlier, earlier meeting that how to look at way columns and colonnades can really help make that a really elegant space that is a part of the public room. The third area that we want to look at is adjacent to Vine Street, and this is the area where we're looking at ways that we can implement the 63 Vine Street building. The comments that we heard in our last meeting was how, because, let me just point out, there was an intricate ramp system that took us to underground parking, that was where the existing 63 Vine Street building was. Some comments that we heard was how could we, could reposition the building in such a way through different techniques and create an adjacency to some open space. So these areas include, you know, a private garden, seating area, as well as looking at potentially a building with a facade or, or the way 63 Vine Street could be incorporated into the building design itself, or maybe even an element that looks at removing it and the power of history suggesting the strength of the memory of the space. And those were a couple of the options that we looked at, so I'm just going to briefly walk you through three different options. The first is looking at rebuilding the facade into the corner of the courtyard, and an opportunity there is that this would draw people across that space, really create an open space that's integrated, the aspects around this, by putting it a little bit farther back from the street, of course, is that it doesn't give the street presence that the, that the building originally had. We also recognize that by building a facade, it has somewhat of a two-dimensional aspect around this, and also that may not relate directly to the program. So then we advanced it to another option that said, well, what if the building was rebuilt into the building itself or created as a part of the building, and the orientation of that has been moved, there's been a strong history for 63 Vine Street to be moved in the past, and we looked at an opportunity in how that could be reimagined as a single-family dwelling in this location, how it could have a strong front yard, and also, again, sort of find itself built into the building in a way that suggests a bit of a reciprocal relationship between the old and the new in that manner. I think the third one that we looked at, as we moved to this, is the what-if opportunity that presents when you look at the building as a, as a space. And the strength of this, I think, proposal is that, does the removal of the building create a stronger identity with historic houses that exist on Vine Street? Does that space and the way that we can recreate, let's say, some of the aspects of the siding and the materiality or the windows, create a strong relationship back to the other houses? And I think that's a unique situation here, is that the proposition in question is, when you have a situation where you reimagine it, what happens when you create absence of it, and does it suggest a stronger relationship to its authentic history? And so those are just things for us to review together, and we are interested in your feedback, of course, and I also just want to point out, in this design presentation, we haven't really gotten into the building and the roof lines and intricate roof lines, but something that we want to further advance is when we come back, but I think that we wanted, as I pointed out, to really begin to design the building from the ground plane up and how the building creates a public, I'd say, a positive public connection at the ground plane, and to think about how the building is designed there. And just as a recap, I would like to add, just in terms of programming, just in terms of where we are, we're looking at just as two commercial spaces with approximately 36 dwelling units, 34 off-street parking spots, a maximum FAR of 2.5, and the designs that we've been showing you at the ground plane are represent a over 20% public open space as defined by the zoning ordinances, and also a building height that is significantly less than 60 feet. And thank you, I hope that was brief enough for you.
Always, thank you.
Okay.
Planning Board, do you want to speak, or do you want to let it go to the public first?
I'd like to have a chance to say.
I'd like to have a chance to speak.
Okay, you can speak and then we'll open to the public.
Okay, so I go back to the starting point is the zoning bylaw, the center business district 7.3. Purpose of the zoning bylaw includes, number four, promote and protect Winchester Center's historic resources and small town character. Starting from the very purpose of 7.3 Center Business District, we're here to protect the small town character, the historic resources. Furthermore, this was adopted by town meeting. And in town meeting, they were presented with a section 7.3.18 Historic Resources. Plans that include demolition of historic structures are strongly discouraged. And there's a map that goes with it, 7.3.4. And from the time when we first met, before you were here, in meeting with Mr. Gillespie, we said, we have the historic resource and that's going to be a part of the objective of developing the site. Then we have a master plan committee that we're about to wrap up on our master plan and vote on it. This is how we began. We began with a survey and I can't remember how many thousand people.
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred people responded to the survey. And in the survey, it said historic resources. Ninety-one percent of respondents agreed that preserving the historic quality of the town center is important. So what I see here has no bearing on our master plan, on our community outreach, on our zoning bylaw. So I just think we're not communicating at this table. And I want to go back in your show, you said something about preserving a, yeah, you may as well go back so we can all see it because I keep getting these reviews of our meetings, keep going way, way, way back to the beginning. You may as well scroll up and go back to what you heard from the last meeting. And, yeah, and here we are. I know what the feedback was. There we are, yeah. And I said that my last words to you were, we want to preserve the building. I said it in plain English. It's in the zoning bylaw. Let's preserve the building and work with it. And I gave you something that was an example of something I clipped out of a magazine. It was an example from Cambridge Seven and what they did out in Western Mass in Williamstown. So we just aren't communicating. Then if you could go forward a little bit.
Forward?
Yes, please.
One more?
The shot that you have of 63 Vine Street.
Okay. I'm sorry, just.
The picture of 63 Vine, the photo?
Yeah, okay, right there.
Yeah, so, okay, now we get the front of it, but it says, study demo and rebuild some aspect of facade. No, that's preserve the building. Yes, Heather did say that and she said, if you want to get the votes from this board, and she was clear, it was not necessarily how she felt, but she felt that the board, meaning what you would need, which is four out of five votes, would be expecting to see some good faith effort and working with this building. Now, Brian, I asked you to load just a couple of slides. They're fast and I certainly, it'll take two minutes if you can just pull those up.
I just need the mouse.
Oh, you need the mouse. I'll continue to talk while that's on the screen, though. The virtues of the house, first of all, it is one of our oldest buildings in the town. And we've done a screen of Macris, the Massachusetts Historical Commission's website, of how many buildings are left of this period. They're probably about 30 in total. That's a rough estimate. It's really an old building and even though I understand it's been treated badly, that's something we, I mean, for some reason why we had to do what we did in the zoning bylaw because otherwise we get demolition by neglect and that's what's been going on here. But ultimately, if this town is going to do what our master plan is saying citizens want us to do, going to have to deal with the decline and decay of these historic buildings and then see them reconstructed. So restored. This is an example of what that house looked like. This is from Preservation Mass's website. And this was after a project that was done. I'm not familiar with it, but you can see how simple it is. Get the yellow stuff off the house and re-site it. Siding isn't that hard and the surround on that house, which is what our house in Winchester would have had, is very simple to rebuild. Brian, can you advance? So it is the nature of historic frame buildings that they get re-sided and they get new roofs. This is a 17th century house in Saugus. Seventeenth century houses have lasted a long time. And then even Historic New England, Historic New England owns this building. Even they understand there's a limit to what you can do with wood. So you re-site. In this case, you're getting a new roof. Next slide, please. Here's a house in Winchester. A builder just bought it and he's flipping it. And even for him, it was cost effective to pull the siding off and put new siding on. So it can be done. This isn't that hard. Next slide. This is up the street from me. They do, this is another one. It's easy to do. So I think the point is reciting and putting a new roof on this, do what you want inside, but preserving the house really isn't a big effort. Next slide. So we're asking you to, we have, it's color coded, it's in the zoning bylaw to do, and we're charged with upholding the zoning bylaw. We promised the town meeting, this is something that we would try to do. So we'd like to see the building restored. Next slide. Here it is. It's not that different. Get the yellow stuff off. The windows are actually still there, roof's still there. Some of the virtues of this, different from your park, are there's this whole Jane Jacobs concept, which I'm sure you're familiar with, of eyes on the street. You get that building occupied again and it creates a much more attractive corridor for anyone moving up into the Vine Street neighborhood. When you have a park there, you've got another dead space and right across the street is a dead space, which is the entrance to a big parking garage of Wedgewood Place. So putting the house with the eyes on the street, it's the historic building, it's residential, it connects with the residential neighborhood up above on Vine Street. This is all a much more appealing transition. And we do have stuff in the zoning bylaw. I'm not going to bother everybody with that. But we're supposed to also be making sure in our zoning review that this creates a good transition into the, that any new construction respects these borders or boundaries of our districts. We're going from CBD into a residential district. So it's that, I think I had one more or is that the end? It's it. So that's my own take on it, that this would be the starting point in that we worked from the house and the virtues of that house, what it does for the street, what it does for the neighborhood, what it does for the pedestrians who are moving up and down that neighborhood. And it's also, I should add, part of a cultural district and this is in the boundaries of the cultural district. Historic resources are considered part of one of the things you do in a cultural district. You preserve the historic resources. So I can't count to five for you, but I can tell you, and we spoke well early. I still have, in fact, I printed out the email. We spoke in May of 2019. And I think we had a pretty good idea of what some of us, at least, were hoping to see in this development. And this isn't it.
Hi. So I have a slightly different take. in my mind, what's important to that neighborhood is to see a transition. And so the question I ask myself is what makes that transition successful? And in my mind, what makes that transition successful is the look of the building that's going to be there. So I, you know, for me, a facade would work. The neighborhood won't see the back of the building. They will see the side and the front. I think you know from Maureen's point of view that there is a strong bias towards preserving buildings and you do have to show that there are substantial beneficial impacts if you take it down. So when I'm looking at the designs that you came up with, and I understand that they're just preliminary.
Would I be able to pull that back?
Yeah, because it doesn't help if I look at it and no one else.
I can go to the slide for you.
Yeah. Oops, sorry.
I just want to make sure, Brian, I'm up, there we go.
So why don't we take a look at, you had three, I believe you had three
Yes.
Different things. So the first one, I think.
Do you want this plan?
No, the ones where you showed your ideas.
Last slides.
Yeah, okay, so right here, if I look at this, I don't see a transition. What I see is, as you said, it looks like a very flat thing glued onto the building. So that doesn't work well. The next one, I don't think does justice to the structure. And what it doesn't do is it doesn't, certainly you've got the facade in it, but it doesn't make it as prominent as it needs be. And the last one, while I, you know, it's an intriguing concept, but I don't think it works in this town. Just because people want to see the actual building. Although I do appreciate the thought that went behind that because it's intriguing to me. So I think I would be happier if you were able to take that middle, the second option and, you know, bring it out so that it is actually something which looks like, I mean, here, to be honest, it looks like it's been swallowed. And I can, again, I'm a big fan of modern architecture, so I can understand how you can put things together. But I don't think that this town really is into that. So I think there's a concern there that you meet with the expectations. So I'm not as wedded to maintaining the entire structure. What I would like to see is that, and I don't mind the turning of it because in a sense, turning it this way does give the neighborhood a better view of it. And the question is, who is that building there for? Is it there for the people driving down Vine Street or is it for the people who are actually going to see it most of the time? What is the most important presentation? And so I would bring it out more. My other, I do have a concern that if you see it sideways and it's brought out more, it's going to look like a slot house. And so it will look odd considering the other buildings on the block are rotated with their facades, their main facades towards the street. So that's sort of a tension. I don't know how you work around that. you know, I think in order to achieve a compromise that will get you the votes you need on the board, you are going to have to do something with that building. I don't know if just rebuilding it as is, I think it's important to reuse some of that original materials because that's what's historically important and the design. I mean, it's, and I'm actually saying, I'm compromising with my own views on this because I would like this project to go forward. So, and the only other thing I'd note is that you got the zip code wrong on your mural on the back.
Oh, that's an image from a different artist that we didn't, it's not meant, it's came from another project.
But those are my comments on, I think this is the most important issue that will either make or break this project just because of being able to retain that.
Yeah, I think the, can I start with the comment around orienting it and which side the transitional element can occur to? I think there's, it's interesting when it's rotated. Coming down Vine Street and facing the residential neighborhood has a certain strength. And the way the space and the lawn could work adjacent to that would be, I think, a little bit more grand than necessarily up against a thinner sidewalk. So it's a question which is interesting, if it's rotated or not rotated. Due just to the site geometries and where the building is flushing out currently, it's more difficult, I will say, to run it parallel to Vine Street just based on the parking ramp and the necessary square footages of how these work. So, and so can I ask you a question around the idea of its placement? And you were bringing up something around, you know, how far it's pulled out or within.
Yeah, I just want to.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
I want to push back a bit on your concern about whether it's rotated or not because you have the facade on your first one, you do actually have the facade directly parallel to the street.
I want to see what you, yeah.
So go back one. So here you do have it oriented the way it is right now.
It overlaps the property line. It's hard to tell. Not overlaps the property, it runs past the perpendicular line of the property. So it's actually longer than the width of the property that's remaining, but that's just.
I cannot visualize that right now, but I mean, this I don't think works because it disappears into the bulk of the building.
I agree.
So you asked a question about bringing it out. And here, I think, bringing it out means detaching it a lot from the building. I think, I don't know how it would work architecturally, but certainly being able to see that the gamel as a separate roof structure from the main building. Because otherwise, it looks like.
It's in there.
It's in there or it's just a facade wrapped around it and it doesn't have, it doesn't represent a somewhat independent structure.
Yeah, we looked at actually pulling it out to the ridge line of the building that sort of then at that point allows all of the roof to be visibly seen and has a little bit less engulfed kind of view of how the building works. And that was something that we can continue to study too.
Good.
So I'll just volunteer. You are going to end up looking for four votes and it's not going to cut it with me.
Just responding to.
Yeah, no, I know, but I feel like I'm being left out of a dialogue as opposed to a presentation. And I also want to just emphasize, there is, I suspect you are familiar with Jane Jacobs and the idea of putting eyes on the street. And once you shift that, you're losing a lot of the opportunity to close the gap that's created on the northern side of the street. The southern side is where your pedestrian will right now go because even without the building being occupied. So I know it is involved because I study urban design and theory and it's not just theory, it's reality. We know that that's where people by their psychology logically will go.
No, I like what you're saying. I just want to just address the questions around the orientation of the building. As you elaborate a little bit more around it, does this seem something that it wants to remain parallel to Vine Street in your opinion?
It wants to be where it is.
Okay.
You ready? Okay. So first of all, your perspectives are not at eye level. They're all flying high. So just so.
Wait, look at that person.
And you're very, all the beginning ones are all high. They're all shooting over the head. So if you go back to the beginning. And so I just, it's very deceptive and I just want to make sure.
These are about.
No, you can see you're shooting high because you're looking above the people's heads. And you can draw all the lines, take all the, I mean, take all these lines and draw them. And you're coming up over here, which is over here. You're not coming at the eye level of the people. And so I just want to make sure you, because that is deceptive. And I want, I would like rather that you come in and we address the four stories and we address them honestly versus trying to sell it because you won't get past Heather and I without having accurate perspectives.
Our history, Masato, finishing point, right?
Well, anyway, so just, I just want to make sure. And then with that comment, then on the other side is you showing your four stories without your roofs and you're just doing it as a mass block. Without your roof lines, that also hinders you because with your roof line, you'd have more of an interest and the height would be reduced visually. But right now you're doing it as a block. So on that side, that doesn't help you. But, so those are two countering things. You talked about the overhead and like you don't have a colonnade drawn in or anything on this. So that also with this perspective, right? So when the public is viewing it from here, if they're not architects or designers, they're looking at it being like, we have this overhang that's just free floating. What does it mean when you're saying, I know what it means when you say it, but the public doesn't. So I just want to, that hinders you in your presentation. Going with that, so I have a couple of questions for you. You're going for 20% open public space. What is your actual open space?
Okay, so we're taking a minimum of 15 feet in our calculation. So the property setback, the setback from the property line is 20 feet and the wall thickness is around three plus feet. So we are including this area here all the way around to this zone here. And then similarly, we're taking all of this space here as part of our public open space.
So you're saying that the reason you're, that you are moving the house the way you are is to get your open space percentages. Is that why you're recommending, you're giving your proposals the way you are? Because it goes against what the board told you to do in the last presentation.
So just to answer the question around the building location currently, it's currently, you know, an L-shaped building that is right around this location. One of the challenges with the proposal as a mixed-use project is that to provide off-street parking. And so the parking ramp is off of Elmwood and it goes underground and there is a parking area below grade. And that was discussed in our last meeting as one of the reasons why the building would act in order to achieve, I should say, parking was. parking, was, this is what was just presented last time, was that we needed to either remove and rebuild the structure. And that was the reason around that, was due to the underground parking.
So in a different proposal, at a different site, they were talking about a car elevator, instead of doing the ramping system, which would help alleviate that height variation that you have off of Vine, which is creating that wall. So instead of not having the house in red, you're now getting a big stone wall. Yeah, on the, on the view, so is that an option? Is there an option to hide that ramp behind the facade of the building? So yes, the first story is, you know, I mean, they do it where you have the historical facade, but the interior is very modern. Very dealt with, where you have, that is a car ramp behind it, and are you able to do that?
The automated parking or an elevator lift?
I'm just giving you options, you could do elevator lift, you could do the front facade of the, the building in red. And instead of having a wall and have it hidden behind the windows, you could do, I mean, there's a lot of other, you're, you're trying, you know, the, you're going into a modern approach of how you're dealing with it, in terms of the cutout, right? And leaving it as a void, that is incredibly depressing. And in terms of art world, that to me is really depressing, because you are taking something that some people do hold value to in this town, and you're making it be empty. It's like, it's just, from a, my perspective, from an art world, it's, it's, so that is not, but.
To answer your question, I want to make sure I address it. So we have been looking at alternative parking, as opposed to self-park with ramp systems, and we'll continue to evaluate that. And there's an opportunity there in terms of how that could position the sixty-three Vine Street building relative to that.
And if you put the historical building in, attached it, move your building back to it slightly, right? You'd get your open space up in front as well, which gives you more opportunity, you could do outdoor seating and stuff. And that's more of a public space from a, using the restaurants, but not open to the public. Is that something that you might look into to do that? And then you, I mean, so I see you're trying to create these public spaces, what if you actually put it on the front of the building to get the, the building in red back?
I'm sorry, just so I follow you, to take the sixty-three Vine Street and move it to, to Main Street?
No, leave the sixty-five where it currently sits.
Sixty-three?
Yes, and move your entire building back toward leaving the historical building. So you're embedding that building as part of your square footage. Move it back and put your, your square footage in the front of the building for public seating or restaurant seating out front. And, but that's the way you're, because what you're doing is, like, based on what I'm looking at, is you're really set on where your open space is. And does it have to be where it is, and can you embed it? And then can you be more creative, if you are having problems with your ramping system or your parking, to then embed it behind the facade of the building?
It just, I think in terms of the parking entry itself, it seemed to work out best on Elmwood, because there's a strong precedent.
I think your location is, yes.
I would agree. And then, just in the initial evaluation of how a self-park system that has a ramp would, you're looking at the dash line of the ramp itself, there is a run to get down, which is somewhat significant. So if you're at twenty-four and a half, so the parking entry has to be above the floodplain. And so at twenty-one or twenty-two, twenty-three, you just can't get that until you get up to about twenty-four and a half. And then having that ramp run that is fairly long to get down to an elevation, which is below, you know, the elevation that you need for structure with a van-accessible spot. So I think that is what's causing the building to be sort of evaluated in this manner. And we can continue to look at other options around parking, particularly self-park, in which we've been in conversations around, and how that would free up ways of evaluating where the building could be located.
Yeah, I saw though in your elevations, you're taking the scale of the building and starting to draw your lines to it later on. So you're getting some of your scale, because you are taking scale off of that elevation, is my understanding, right, correct? When you go to your, the three options that you provided, you're grabbing some of the scale proportions of the window sizing.
Here, in?
Yes, and here, so your lines are lining up. So what I am saying is, if you need to get your ramp in there, don't go off inside the building, whether you align with those windows or not. Don't, just get the facade in place, and, and get your ramp behind that facade as a.
I think, if my hearing correctly, I mean, a more meaningful sort of implementation of the building would be, it'd be encouraged than a facade.
Well, if you got the elevator, if you did an elevator, you could actually make that be your entrance point for all your residents. Could come in through the, that front, that, the entry door.
Yeah, that's possible. I mean, also, I think it could become a dwelling unit, which would be part of its original history, as opposed to, you know, something that's more public.
God be occupied, that's part of the eyes on the street. Again, you've got, we, we're dealing with the neighborhood, we're not just dealing with a, a client. And in the neighborhood, they need to have occupied space to make that a pedestrian access. And I should add, there's the synagogue, and there's a congregational church, and people, there are more people than.
I, I think it'd be advisable to have it occupied, and that's the way I would view it as well. I mean, this is something that would be, could be a great amenity space, it could be a great public amenity room. It could be a single-family dwelling that people come into. And I think it's really coming down to, you know, am I hearing correctly, is that we want to see this form as a transitional element? And really, it's a challenge, it's a dimensional challenge, as much as anything. And I think we just want to look at, you know, how it's positioned, and really, what is enough of it? And I, you want, it wants to have enough identity on the site that is a balance between, you know, this new proposal with the existing buildings that are adjacent to it. And I think its meaning would really come a lot around, you know, how it's being used, as much as it's just as a pure form.
And maybe the, you actually do a U shape, or whatever you need to do, right? And put the open space in the middle, and then that becomes more of a private space for those occupants, as the other areas for public. I am not tied, you have a lot of public space, I'm not tied for all that space to be public, if you can get that, the historical facade, in its current location as.
You know, and, and the other thing, just I want to point out on, on the grades, right? Because there is, let me just go back to the site plan for a second. So, actually the grading, there is quite a, a grade change right here. This is about elevation thirty-three, right where the driveway exists. So you got a, a run here that's going up to about elevation thirty-three right here. And so when this is thirty-three, the question could arise, like how a transition could be made between those properties, more like elevationally consistent. So thirty-three isn't necessarily a very high elevation, it's actually more consistent with the adjacent property heights, and you're getting some odd transitions occurring right now, just as a.
Yeah, it's a unique site, it gives you challenges.
Yeah, there's some challenges there. I think also, it's interesting, you know, because I think your point Heather, around like public space. I want to just kind of touch on a couple of the public space issues, I understand the priority around the building, and it's important. But there are some benefits of, I just want to point out of widening, let's say, the sidewalk, implementing some street trees. I think the idea of a ramp system that gets you up is a necessity. We have to be there, right? Because you're in a FEMA hundred-year floodplain. So that's a necessity, and putting it inside a retail space is, puts you farther away from the wall. So we wanted to create that transitional space as being a part of the public space. I think there's a lot of advantages of how the ground plan can work at that level that we still need to develop. And I would agree, Heather, that we're not there yet, in terms of developing the colonnade and the way the space. And that's something I'm looking forward to coming back and developing and showing you. Also, as this space kind of works out, it seems like it's great borrowed space that could be just given back. I mean, you've got an opportunity here where we're able to put a small amount of interior off-street parking at this level. We're able to shape the geometry in such a way that allows people to pull into this space, and then really move three hundred and sixty degrees around the building. And so if you can make a building not have a back necessarily, and have a front and a side and a rear, and they all work together in a way that contributes to the cultural district, that's what we're trying to present as an opportunity. And that we want to be able to build the building from the ground up. And so if we can get, you know, site circulation to work, so that the retail spaces flow and open the way this other retail space has operable, you know, windows along this wall that point toward the street. I look for a lot of co-benefits in the design. How does the building, you know, take advantage of, let's say, Vine Street sightline that we heard very strongly from the community? It's like, how do you bake better sightlines? And then how does it offer, also offer an opportunity to become part of the gateway in terms of the way the building is received? So I just want to walk you around a couple of other locations and how that works. Additionally, I think this could be a tremendous space back here, you know, like where people could, you know, enjoy, and with.
It might be a tunnel though, because you have four stories, and then you have this, the.
This is about, I mean, but, but you're going to get an area that instead of just being lost space, can it contribute back? And that's a question for you as a board, if whether or not you feel that's appropriate, you know, response is to provide that or not. I think it were, I think the team is looking at ways that we can contribute to the cultural district, and that we just saw this is one way.
Okay, and can we go open up to comments real quick? Anyone from the audience, would you like to make a comment? If so, can you please come to the table? Come on forward. And my apologies, after this, we will move on to the master plan, once we give opportunity for those to speak, but they came to speak.
Yes, John Clemson, I'm on the Winchester Historical Commission, and I'm a town meeting member, precinct three. And I think a lot of my points have been made. I'll just add that this building, it, it's a difficult building to understand and appreciate, but.
Can I get a slide of it?
Let him talk.
Oh, he's trying to talk to something, we're trying to visualize, Brian.
Okay, I, I.
Oh, you have it, I'm sorry, I thought he had it.
Which slide, sir, would you like to see?
Uh, the picture of the house. Sixty-three.
Right there?
There we go, thank you. I just want to emphasize how, what a rare survival this is. It's part of the first, the initial period of development of the town. A lot of Winchester, the center of Winchester looked like this at one point. And I think there are probably three or four buildings that survive in the center. So, you know, I think it's worthy of our attention and concern. And it, it really serves as a document of this period of Winchester's first phase of development after the railroad came in. And it, it's really about, in addition to eyes on the street, it's about pattern and historic building patterns. And the streetscape that, in addition to being driven down, is walked down. So, you know, I just want to emphasize how important this building is, and, you know, it's worthy of preservation, so.
Thank you, John.
Just wanted to add that.
Do anyone else want to speak?
Hi, I'm Marsha Kuhn, I live at Four Wedge Pond Road. So we walk this all the time, we walk into town to do things, we go to Fells. We are very pro-developing the site, but I think everyone needs to look at this, what do you want in your neighborhood? And I appreciate your presentation, it's hard to argue with a nice park and a colonnade and a cut of the building, so that improves the visibility. But I find it a little deceiving also, in some of them, where the scale of the house that's up above this looks almost as large as this four-story building that's going on the corner. And I, I just really, I need the things to be in scale, that last one you were just at. That is not that poor family's house. They are up a hill, they are looking down, and your building, and I realize it's just massing, just is going to surround them. And we're already seeing a wall on Vine with the building that's on Elmwood. And everyone said, oh, it's three stories, it's a really tall three stories. When you're on Elmwood, looking at parking and then the residential, and it's also really big when you walk on Vine and you have that wall there. So I need everyone to look at it from that perspective. I also just, I know from going into Boston, there are older buildings that have been maintained where they are. And then the new building is integrated above and around. What I'm seeing here is kind of an odd way to represent the house. And when I see that, and I realize again, it's massing, I see a wall. I'm still walking down the hill and I'm seeing a wall. I'm not seeing a nice house, historic house, that I would love to see saved, and then have you build behind it or something else. So my last comment is just thirty-six units, the last building was twenty-five. You cannot put that many people in our little neighborhood and not give them two parking spots. Winchester, mom and dad have a car, every high schooler has a car, you have two high schoolers, I'm up to four cars. You don't even have one spot per unit. So thirty-six units, I think, is way too many, and parking has, it cannot go on the street. I think the people who live on Vine deserve parking passes, so only they can park there. Wedge Pond, which says no parking on either side, we are on our sidewalks when we have company, because there is not enough parking. When the temple has an event, people are all up and down every street, there's just not enough room. And I understand the desire of everyone in Winchester to build and have all these great things, but they live way out of town, and they're not thinking, this big development and, oh, thirty-six great new units is going to impact them, because it's not. It's going to impact the small number of us who live in that neighborhood and love it for what it is. And I think it's easy to sit on Johnson Road, or, you know, in the flats and go, yes, build! Winchester needs to get bigger and better and everything else, because they're not dealing with it every day. And they're not walking down the street with their dog twice a day, seeing something that's way too out of scale. So, and the scale from the front, if you're going to show the four-story height compared to the six-six-six building, tell me you're going to set it back, the ten to fifteen feet that that building has set back. Otherwise, it's not a fair comparison, because that has trees, that has a parking drop-off. This has more trees, but it only has two more feet on the sidewalk, so that's a little deceptive. So, I wish you luck, because it's a hard, hard project, and I want something, but I, I have to speak up with.
What's your name?
Marsha Kuhn.
K-U?
H-N. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? Oh, yeah.
Hi, Edie Dungus, from forty-two Vine Street, not far from Marcia and Polly and from Fells Hardware Store. I too am a proponent of keeping the Fells house. And have to reiterate, the parking, that's a problem currently, never mind with thirty-six more units. And we already don't know what the parking will be like when these fifteen units or twenty units that are about to be open house and start to move in. So I'm very concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the fact that there will be retail space there, and I'm assuming that it will be Fells Hardware. So where is that eighteen-wheeler tr- delivery truck going to be putting, bringing his, their supplies? Which comes very early in the morning. And also, where is the trash? And so, and I like the fact that the driveway is on Elmwood rather than being on Vine Street. But I'm assuming Elmwood will stay to be a one-way only, so that you have to go in from, from, what, that would be the other side of Vine Street and near the, near the congregational church, and go down to get into their driveway. So those are my concerns.
Just, I think to answer a couple of questions, if they're brought up, is the loading could occur on Elmwood and be brought into both retail off of Elmwood. Trash is kept inside the building in a ventilated space that will be ventilated through the roof, and then brought through a trash service.
Yeah, but that's, the trash service, that's the guy that we have at five AM across the street from the apartment building that we used to have, and it's very disruptive.
Right, so I mean, but the, the idea would be much of the loading would occur on Elmwood, and not on the Vine Street side.
And then also, I would be concerned about the, I'm assuming that the loading, the, the parking driveway, that's for residential parking. So the current retail parking during the day, that seems to be a problem. Even though we have signs, you can only park for so many hours on Main Street, or minutes. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll, we'll do one more, and then we got to move on to our...
Amory Brocko, twenty-three Elmwood. We are like a new community, I feel. I've only been in Winchester almost two years in June. And in Elmwood, at twenty-three Elmwood, we have five condo units. We all, it's all sold out. We all know each other. This now Allegro building is ten units, also in Elmwood, and it's new. Two are already sold, so we hope to get to know those other eight units. But having another building, thirty-five units, to me, just seems way out of scale of that community, and we are a new community. And the tra- you know, I understand the concerns on Vine, and I appreciate those, but on Elmwood, we have those concerns, concerns as well.
Of course.
We are a new, smaller community, and I think thirty-five is like just way out of scale. And if you're going to have more traffic there for parking and everything, I think that parking really has to be consideration in the, at the next planning board. And I, you know, I look forward to it, but just not, please not thirty-five units. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back, because we're coming way off our schedule, and need to move on to our master plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the comments.
And we look forward...
Thank you very much.
At the next time, if possible, can we get on Friday for Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
I know you were on vacation, so I don't want to, I recognize that, and I asked late in the game, but...
Yes, we'll make sure you get that a Friday in advance.
Actually, for the other project as well, so you may as well direct it to the project of developers.
Yeah, but it's...
No, Heather, and, and Maureen, and to the whole board, we'll make sure that you get them the Friday before our Tuesday meeting, so you have enough time to review it in advance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, could you send around this version to us?
Yeah, that's...
And post it, maybe?
It was a little bit...
It should, it should, this should go on, on our website.
I think it do go on our website.
Yeah, it's just...
I looked it up online.
The other one we sent was a draft version. I recommend that you use this version.
This is a newer version.
It's the big bucks.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thanks, Maureen.
All right, so we are going to move on to the master plan.
Do you print out some of the presentation?
Of what?
Would you like print out some of the presentation?
Oh.
I'll take a printout.
Um, you can leave them with Brian. That'd be great.
Actually... What's his first name?
Oh, one more. When you do your elevations, can you please do the, not just your building, but go farther out, please?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
We'll make sure that...
Thank you.
Now I'm recognizing where you're from. Where you from?
All right, so my, my thought on how to work the next portion, and my apologies to all of you who are waiting to speak regarding the master plan, but thank you so much for your patience. It was really, it's really important for those to have a voice on, in the projects. But going forward, what we're going to do is, we are going to open up comments from the audience. The planning board has also received a lot of comments from residents to our attention and gather those, and then the planning board thereafter is going to have a discussion about those comments. And if we have questions after the comments of those, you're welcome to ask, but I'd rather that we go through, have, if you have comments and concerns, you voice them, and then we go into discussion format thereafter. So, if anyone had any comments that they wanted to share, please come forward and state your name and your address, and we look forward to them.
Bullet points, do you mind? Do I hand them out, or is it something that's inappropriate?
Yeah, you can hand them out.
No, no, I don't know. Are you bothered?
Every board operates differently.
I tend to stuff, and I don't want to, you know...
No, every board operates differently, so...
I have five, plus me, so I'm perfect.
It's like chewing gum. You have to have one for everyone.
Sorry.
And just so you know, Heather is watching. She has the flu in, which is why she's not here.
Which is why we don't want to see her.
Which is why we asked her to please. So, it's not meant to be, she's not just hanging out. She's...
So, these are, these are just really quick bullet points. My name's Deborah Johnson. I live at fourteen Wickham, and I'm a physical therapist.
Help me with Wickham.
Wickham is by the town forest off Grove Street.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm a physical therapist, so I, I looked at this mainly just from disability ADD, ADA standpoint, and I made some bullet points that I, there's a bunch of different drafts, so hopefully, nothing's been changed. But I just wanted to, I went to the meeting at the Jenks Center in November, I think it was, and I was a little upset to not see disability aspect really addressed more from my perspective when I looked at it. I did go to the DAC meeting that following, like December ninth or whatever it was, and voiced my opinion there too, because I felt like the DAC wasn't really involved. I could be wrong. I haven't gone to all the meetings. So, anyway, looking at this, under goal one, you talk about adding, well, the, the proposal was to add another planner, and there was a list of expertise. I would like ADA experience listed as one of the expertises as well. Like, for instance, it talks about historic, you know, preservation being something that would be good to have in a planner. I would love to have a planner that also has expertise or past experience, whatever, training, school in ADA aspect. Under number three, there's other people in town who are much better about adaptive housing in terms of the information about this, but it really was confusing. It wasn't clear to me, the emphasis on the single-family housing with ancillary. It talked about how there's an structure that has a certain amount, like six units, it has to be affordable and things like that, and that it kind of, within the same sentence, talks about ancillary structures. So, I just wanted to, I didn't understand that clearly, and I maybe have a little bit more, you know, so I just wanted to say that it wasn't clear to me if that was being addressed, and if it wasn't, it should be. And Kathy Boyle is very involved. Kathy Boi- oh, sorry, I can see, I'm sorry. So, she is the person who really is the expert on that. Number eight, I love, love, love the fact, because Winchester is really, really inaccessible. The sidewalks in downtown area in particular, they look lovely, the bricks. The bricks are just the biggest tripping hazard, even just for able-bodied people to walk around. I mentioned the uneven sidewalk, for instance, we're in a Scoop-a-Palooza. You can, even as a stepping stone, if you replace that with a, a tree grate, and you, you know, you can adjust the levels on that, so that someone who's using a walker or a wheelchair can get over those roots. But right now, you have bricks sticking up at twenty different angles because of the tree roots. So, some of these may be long-term goals, but I would love to see short-term solutions in there as well. And obviously, the, the curve ramps downtown. Anyway, there, there's a lot of issues there. Goal eight includes a lot of them, but perhaps a short and a long-term solution in there would be great. Number ten was one of the big areas that I wrote about. You mentioned the train travel in one of your paragraphs. Sorry, there wasn't like an A, B, and C, so...
Yeah.
But there's like a train travel talking about how they're trying to, to, you know, get that electrified and move along there. Then there's an issue about the bus travel. There's not a lot of issue about interconnectivity between those things. And one of the things that's going on right now, I know the Chamber of Commerce is having a meeting for the MBTA right now, but the train, October fourth, as you mentioned about the train. ADA, unfortunately, ADA is like the minimum amount required. It doesn't necessarily make everything functional. So, ADA, if you're in front of a school and you have an entrance into the school, the presumption is you're going to take the same entrance getting out of the school. So, that's how ADA looks at handicap parking in relationship to accessible entrances. Well, the train station is an anomaly, and it's not really dealt with in ADA law, because you have, you're getting into your, from your car into the outbound area and into the inbound area separately. So, with them moving the ramps, now there will no longer be a ramp down by the post office lot, right? That's just going to be staircase and elevator. There will no longer be any kind of ramp behind the jewelry store, you know, the area I'm talking about. That's going to be replaced with a staircase, I believe.
Yeah, because we can't get away.
But they can't fit the ramp, which I understand. But now they're talking about the ramp being up on Shore Road. So, picture if you will that, according to ADA law, you have to have parking, accessible parking near accessible entrances. So, if you're over by Dagostino's in that lot, that may become affordable housing, but right now it's a little parking lot. If you park there, you can take an elevator, go into Boston. Say you come back from Boston and that elevator is not working, which happens more times, and you obviously can't get that fixed immediately. Your other option is to go down the entire length of the train station, now go over the Rotary brand-new pedestrian bridge, and take the ramp down that leads you to Shore Road. Well, now you have to get back from Shore Road, exit, back to your original handicap parking spot over by Dagostino's. So, you're crossing three roads, entrances of the Rotary, which isn't fun to cross as a pedestrian that's able-bodied. And then you have to get your way back, you know, either go through town or go down through the common lot, and then cross Waterfield Road. So, what I'm asking is to, is there some way to be an interconnection in there with the MB, MBTA? I don't know if the MBTA has extra money in terms of improving sidewalks. No, no, no. Oh, no, I know that they, but, but I'm saying, the bottom of that ramp on Shore Road, they have to modify the side with the ramp. Is, will they work on, you know, the crosswalk there, at least in that section? Is there a way to deal with that a little bit better? Because your interconnectivity stinks in this town, to get from one end to another, and that Rotary is probably one of the most dangerous intersections, in all honesty. And the, the sidewalks are extremely narrow. I, I don't know the, the corner of Shore and Mount Vern, Mount Vernon, where the old sandwich shop was. I think it's a relitor now. I can sometimes not walk past somebody in that sidewalk. It's very lovely, but some of the people put planters out in front of their doors. It narrows the sidewalk. Okay, so enough of that. Very quickly at the end, goal eleven, the complete streets?
They do not. Just so you know, T-TAC does not include it. I just checked it.
And it should. In my mind, I mean, how can you have a traffic advisory committee without...
There's a need for evaluation.
So, that's just my opinion, but I think it should. Goal fifteen, hazardous preparedness. You include things like non-English speakers. You have to include, you know, there's a whole handicap contingency. There's, there's elderly contingency. There's medical issues that aren't technically, you know, under the handicapped. So, I would appreciate if there was more language in there about that. That could be under the Health Department or whatever. Goal number seventeen, you talk about community groups, getting them involved in government, like ENCA. Can you include like the Special Ed- Parent Advisory Commission? You know, some more wording that includes the disabled community would be nice in my mind. Number eighteen, same thing. You're talking about inclusivity. Disability group would be great there too. And number, just throwing out, this was just a little add-on. For nineteen, Parkers, consider it for the preschool program. As far as I know, there still has not been a definitive master plan. It may have changed with the Lynch School construction, but when I was in the IFPPC ages ago, there still was never that definitive master plan for what to do with the preschool. And you save money if you keep it all together. There's different pluses and minuses.
My understanding is, is coming in through Lynch, as of right now.
Right.
But that doesn't mean the state may push us, so we're kind of, but right now, that is a preference, is to have it come in through Lynch.
Yeah. Just a throwing out there. That was a little add-on.
I, I said I wasn't going to comment, but just so you know, your goal one, three, eight, ten, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, I have in my notes for them already. So, what, for everyone who's listening, what happened is, we got feedback from, and I hope you come and speak and help us provide feedback. Catherine Boyle, so Boyle, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Gave feedback. We got some feedback that the language that is currently in the goals did not include disabilities and universal design and different components. The intention was always to include those components. The intention was there. The language was not there to express the depth of how far we were going with it. So, yesterday, I had a conversation with the consultants, yesterday, right, and Brian, saying, we got to fix this, because the intention was always there, but the language wasn't there, and we need to make sure it's very strong, because that is what the goals are of the community, is that part of the inclusive components that a lot of the residents talked about, talked about disability and different, different abilities and inclusivity of, oh, the, the array is very wide, and it, you know, and they're so, so anyway, so they are where they know they were going to go through with a fine-tooth comb. I went through it today for a couple hours and started making it, and this actually is very, this actually is more helpful than what I did, because mine is. So, but this is very helpful, and I, is there anything that she mentioned that you are in disagreement with?
I...
I, I'm not in disagreement with any of it. Diab, are you in any way?
I want to add, anybody who's got a stroller has the same.
Well, it, well, the thing about, the wonderful, wonderful thing...
We're way behind.
No, no, but I'm just saying, the wonderful thing about adaptive design...
I said, I agree.
It benefits everybody. It benefits everybody. Anytime you hurt your ankle and you're using crutches, you know, it benefits everybody. Sorry. Thank you.
No. So, anyway, thank you so much.
And thanks for writing it up.
Can you incorporate all of it? Thank you. All right. Did anyone else have any comments?
Is anybody else? I don't want to...
And thank you so much for taking the time to write those down, too. It is very helpful.
Pamela Court, Precinct Five, and I'm on the Master Plan Steering Committee. I have to thank you all for the hard work that you've done and the review, and the community for its input. And I apologize for not going through this with these kinds of things in mind earlier and springing them on the group more at the last minute. Some of my comments will probably be redundant with some of the things that Deborah said, and some of the things that Deborah added are in areas that I missed when I was going through with these things in mind, and so I, I thank her. And then I, I added, I read the letter that Catherine Boyle sent to you. She is an asset to our community, and she, along with another wonderful mother, runs Autism Housing Pathways, which is a terrific resource within our state, and I thank her for that. So, I used some of her wording, and I want to just say, Catherine, if there's something in there that you think is not appropriate or that you'd like to modify, feel free. It's not going to hurt my feelings. I'm just trying to capture what you wrote and make sure that it, that it's in here. So, along with what Deborah said in, in goal A one point one, and I'll, I'll type these up and provide them to you, to add universal design and ADA compliance to the list of areas of expertise of a, a planner that, that we hope to get. In goal three, I thought it would be good to add some overall wording that includes the addition, the additional criteria, that it includes options for people with disabilities, including physical, intellectual, and developmental, and in parentheses, such as autism. For goal A three point two, or I'm not sure whether it would be more appropriate in goal A four point one, but in the first paragraph of A three point two, to add accessory dwelling units in the first paragraph and this sentence, units which are, and this is, I thank you, Catherine, for this wording, units which are affordable to those at or below fifty percent of the area median income, to serve the needs of intellectually or developmentally disabled residents who live solely on supplemental security income, must not be neglected. In goal A four point two, to add group homes to the second to last And in the first sentence, I apologize, because that's, precedes that, to add adults with developmental or intellectual disabilities. In goals nine and ten, in the matrix, for supporting entities, to add the Disability Access Commission as a supporting entity. And whichever, I don't want to specify the sub-goals. I can leave that to the consultants to determine where that's appropriate, or the, the planning board. For goal sixteen, to add and within-town government. So, for people in the audience who are...
This is hard to press.
Yeah, I apologize, because now that's getting off the disability a little bit, and more with the community engagement. But it, it, it talks about the staff, the paid staff within the building, and I thought it would be good to include within-town government as well. So, improving communication and intra-committee communication, if that, does that make sense? For goals D sixteen point one, in the second paragraph, to include among the organizations that were listed, parent-to-parent, the Coalition for a Safe Community, and the Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
Also known as WINPAC.
Also known as WINPAC, and in other towns, it's known as a CPAC, S-E-P-A-C. It's abbreviated differently in our, in our community. For goal D seventeen point two... For goal D 17.2, to include elected and appointed officials and to add ethics training as well. For goal 18.1, it's sort of a conditional comment. Um, if the facility's master plan does not include the DAC audit of town facilities, to add a reference to that document.
So I'm gonna have you pause there. We have, I'm going to pause her because she's talking about something that none of you know about. So there's a plan that the DAC did that we never, the planning board was never CC'd on it. We are going to forward that to you because it is the one and probably the last plan. So Brian worked today to try to get access to it. And we'll get it to you, just so you know what she's referring, referencing to.
It's an audit, by the way. It's not necessarily a plan.
It's a, yeah, it's an audit of our...
No, it's okay.
Can we get a copy too?
Everyone's gonna get one.
Yeah.
Thank you. For goal D 20.1, in the third paragraph, to add support for new parents, single parents, and families of young children with special needs. And in the fourth paragraph, to include adjustment counselors and special education staff to the list of school staff that you have in that paragraph already. Ending goal D 20.3, um, to include elected and appointed town officials, um, in addition to the other people that are mentioned in there because their interaction with the public puts them in a, a unique position that often requires sensitivity, that, that isn't always a natural, um, quality in, in some of the wonderful folks that volunteer in our town. And I think that's it, so, thank you.
And you are gonna send a written copy, please?
I am.
Thank you. I, I started taking notes and then I just...
I know, I know. I am gonna, I'm gonna, I'll type that up. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Did you have any questions, Anna, on any of those? Are you pretty much...
We're gonna wait for the transcript.
Yeah, I would love to, I mean, I took notes, but, okay.
I would love to also have, if you have any questions, you can ask.
You can ask Brian or I as well. I, I pretty much followed everything she was saying, but I just read this like intense. Please come join us.
I'm Kathryn Boyle. I live on Willowdale Road. And I sit on the Housing Partnership Board and on the Housing Authority. And, um, I did not take the kind of detailed deep dive that Pam did. Um, but I wanna make a couple of points. Um, two things, Pam, I'd like to modify what you said. Where you said SSI, I'd like to add SSI and/or SSDI. Because you don't want SSI to become a limiting factor, especially since people who are on SSI move on to SSDI when a parent dies, retires, or becomes disabled. And in terms of group home, because group home has a legal definition, um, rather than group home, I would prefer to say congregate housing for adults with developmental disabilities. Because that's a broader...
That's what it is, that's what it is.
You know, um, because most people who need it don't actually qualify for a group home, but they will qualify for the other. Beyond that, I mostly wanna draw your attention to the fact that, um, disability, we, we've gotta be careful not to just look at disability in the narrow, physical sense. Um, that there is a broad array of disability of, from, you know, people who become disabled, people who are born disabled, physical, intellectual, mental, blah, 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 blah. And that the ADA does not just address physical accessibility. The ADA addresses programmatic accessibility, which is all too often lost in the process. And we need to be aware of that programmatic aspect to ADA. And one thing I'm gonna raise that, you know, may seem like throwing a Molotov cocktail here, but I'm gonna raise the question, when we talk about housing, if we wanna start to talk about visitability, which is basically the concept that when we look at new structures, we're not talking about retrofitting, but when we're looking at new structures, we want the first floor to be visitable by someone using a wheelchair. And, you know, that allows both for visibility because you've got your friend who comes over for dinner. It also makes it much easier if you wind up having to do a conversion at some point because somebody is acquiring a disability. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any comments? All right, planning board, let's dive in. So I'm assuming everyone reviewed it. And you read the comments that came in from various members of the community. I, um, I, I just wanted, um, to talk about some of those comments that came in. And, um, if we want them added in or want them addressed, um, then add it in. And also I wanted to see from the board how you feel about where the master plan is and get feedback on it. So if we're in the right direction, hmm?
We're missing two people.
I mean, yeah, well, she'll give her feedback too as well.
Why don't you start?
Well, hang on. So why don't we work toward a time? Because we could go forever. It's a very long document. Uh, so I'm interested right now in just how we're gonna do this. And we survive and get some sleep tonight. With all due respect.
No.
And that's, so I would throw out, I just decided this process has been done by a very large group over a very long time. So there are certain things you were mentioning, such as who's actually taking charge of the implementation piece. And I think that that should be done with all of us really assigned to think about it. Because I just accepted it and thought, okay. So if we actually wanna go into that part of this discussion, we could do our homework and come in prepared. And I think maybe even mark it up. So I think that would help us rather than...
Um, well, I wasn't gonna go into that. So there's components, what Maureen is referencing, Deib, is the entities, the primary entity responsible and the supporting entities. There's errors in there.
I submitted a whole bunch of comments on that.
Yeah, and I, as did I. And so I was thinking that at this turn, we'll turn in our comments and our, our recommendations on how to adjust those of who's responsible. And then in the next round, those are rather minor. And we'll, we'll designate, um, town meeting members to figure, because, right? Update that, make sure that those are accurate.
I, I, in my opinion, most important thing to be done tonight is to look at these, these comments that were made that we should discuss. Um, wait until we get the next iteration of the document. Because I made lots of comments on principal parties or responsible parties. And so, rather than, I just wanna see what it all looks like, so.
Anna, when are we potentially getting the last version before March 10th?
March 10th is the last.
March 10th is, is the, our last master plan meeting, I believe.
Yeah, so the draft, the next draft of the, that will be, the sort of next iteration is March 6. So it'll be the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. And then, um, before the planning board meeting on the 24th, there'll be the sort of final version, um, for the, on the 20th. So we'll send it again the Friday before. For the 6th, the thing that we'll be asking the steering committee and, as well as you guys, because you guys are on the steering committee, to look at will be more of like the, sort of, the finer details and less of, I mean, also looking at substance. But this'll be the sort of next phase to look at typos, like the sort of catching all the things that we have, we've asked you since, you know, until now to kind of turn a blind eye to, because we know that a lot of substantive changes are, you know, being made between when you saw the document in December and when you're gonna see it, when it, when you guys adopt it, you know, at the end of the month. So that's kind of the next, the next phase, I guess. So March, long story short, March 6 is the next.
Is when we're getting the draft that we will then...
For the 10th.
Yeah, which we will then go with a fine-tooth comb. Between the Master Plan Steering Committee and us, we'll go through it with a fine-tooth comb, looking for those errors of who's responsible in more depth than what we marked up. So my, that was just to go through the comments. Um, we addressed the majority of them here. I don't think there's anything that I personally, I am in agreement with pretty much everything said. So going to the ones that we received, um, the main comments received. Though we received one today regarding ethics training. I am in full support of that. Um, and open meeting law training included. I think it came in on Pamela's comments as well. So that'll be coming in as well. But I also noted it in my markup to Anna. So you'll see it coming in. I mean, I think that's a good thing. We, we talk about that a lot. In general, uh, around town. And we kind of have fallen, town has fallen off on that. So I agreed with that. And, um, do you wanna go down the list of topics? Does you have your email up?
Yeah, there were, so one was related, like you said, to, um, specifically to ethics training. Uh, we obviously are required to do ethics training every two years by the state. Um, it's through, yes, through this, uh, an online training. And the, the comment was related towards having not, uh, the bare minimum, but why not, uh, we really should be doing annual training that's, uh, either with legal counsel or with the town clerk, uh, real face-to-face training related, related to ethics.
Us as all government volunteers.
So I wanna get more specific. So this is, um, from Kevin Sarnie. He sits on the zoning board. And he wrote a, a letter to Brian and we were all copied. So this is public record. Um, and he also said, I would like to see all town committees, including the planning board, take a signed oath not to work with any outside consultants or with applicants that use consultants that have been, have known ethics violations. And any ads assigned forms should be required from all applicants that they have, um, that they, that come before the town. So we have an applicant right now who has working, is working with a, um, an applicant working with a consultant. And I think we have to say it's, um, the design team that was just here and the developers and their consultant on, um, the, I guess, what hydraulic, um, hydrology? Uh, if that's hydraulic engineering, um, is Larry Beals and his company. And so he's the person who's being referred to here. And we have the question of whether we, and whether this is an aspect of ethics training and whether we have some role in, um, and whether we can do this as well. He'd like to see us, um, take a signed oath not to, and for other people. Um, or with applicants that use consultants that have known ethics violations. So I'd like, I think we owe a response to this question, which came under the master plan.
I think we owe a response, but I would really love to get Legal's opinion on this. I don't plan on wading into that nest of crocodiles or alligators on my own.
No, I wouldn't have expected that, nor would I. But I also wanna make it clear, it was not something this board did, um, at all. But we do have a proponent right now with, um, in this, where we're in this situation.
So my thoughts with that is, I've, I've been very open about it as a volunteer that I work in the greater Boston region. I do not take clients out of Winchester. Um, and I gave that up to sit on this board. However, with the limited and amount, how many volunteers it takes to run this town, if we do that, it's gonna hinder the volunteer. It was, I, I was able to do it. I could do it within my structure of my business and how my family needs me to operate to. But I don't think that is the case. And so with that, I just did not go into that direction. But I do think ethics training, um, is, and having everyone come together and also better communication between boards, um, would be, help that tremendously and deal with those. And, um, I, what he's referencing there is, um, and what happened is not okay. And, um, on a regular basis, there should be the training. And, um, I think the master plan calling it is, is significant for that.
I think it's going to require some, um, maybe counsel being present. But I also think I'm, I just wanna bring up the idea of since this, I mean, there was a lot of email. And again, it would all be public record if anybody's interested, but, um, so it should be known. Um, and for myself, I think one of the bigger concerns is that the, and I don't have any, no, I have not even any no impression. I can say with confidence, this has not been an issue with the current board. But, um, there is this way that people exchange, who are in certain professions, especially in the building world, um, they exchange recommendations. So basically they throw work to other people. So there's no exchange of cash. But there's this idea of go hire so-and-so, or, oh, I think so-and-so would be good. And so-and-so knows that. And so at Winchester, where we got these professionals and often working in Boston, um, there is a real, um, concern I have about how this, um, how this little world works. I'm not in it, you're not in it, you're not in it, but it's happening.
Well, I am in it, actually, but I, I am in the building industry. And they, it's a small world, especially in residential, we're majority residential. But, um, we're in it and, and everyone knows everyone.
So why don't we, why don't we direct Brian? Not direct Brian, ask Brian. I was gonna direct our attention, but anyway, wrong word. Brian, can you set up a meeting with Legal? So we can talk about these issues and find out what's, what's possible? And also what's practical? Because we have to balance practicality, knowing that we have a limited pool of applicants. You want people, so it's a, it's a tough line to navigate. So knowing what other towns have done, knowing what's available, that would be really useful.
I would say also, and I guess this is supposed to be going into a master plan, but it should be, it's the master plans, work, I mean, it's the planning boards work with the master plan. Say we feel that ethics, um, uh, training, I would say it goes beyond the narrowest training I got, which was, has been twice now, um, is the state, it's the state online training.
Online, yeah.
But, um, I do think that it goes beyond that because this more subtle concern that happens in this town is this business of just giving recommendations for other, um, other parties, whether they're involved in engineering, architecture, or construction. And it's happening a lot. So I'm actually pleased to hear this raised. But it does mean we've got other boards. Um, and it's going, it can be an issue with some of the other, uh, people sitting on other boards. So it's not something that we, and I wanna make that really clear, especially with the cameras, this is not just our board. Um, we've got other boards where we have people in these, um, again, I'll just say this, who are just in the world where they're, because of what they do. Or not, maybe even though what they do, they're still recommending so-and-so. And, um, just kind of, so it's unsavory.
So do we have enough, do you have enough direction to put something in?
Yeah, so to recap what I heard you all say, and so this, this is, I'm glad that I'm here so I can verify what I'm actually hearing. So what I'm hearing is to add in language around ethics training, but not necessarily getting into the piece that you were raising, Maureen, around ethics violations, working with consultants, until you all talk with Legal about that.
Well, I mean, it doesn't seem like that's a master plan thing. That seems, that's like an operational, that's my mind.
He raised it, I mean, just as there are all these other, like, um, accessibility that we should be also thinking about.
I mean, I think it goes under the good governance section or however we're calling it, sustainable governance. And I think it, it can be sp- stated broadly.
Right, maybe it's something like ethics val, like, something around values.
And then the strategy would be...
Didn't do it, I put it in as...
Increase, I don't know, come up with the right words for the strategy.
More than the online, that's what was requested.
Oh, no, it's more. It's, what he's talking about is where all the boards and committees come together for a training, pretty much.
I guess what I see.
And then things like that are brought up. Like, are you allowed as a town government elected official? Because elected is different than appointed as well. Are you allowed to...
Not in ethics training. Not from the town's, I mean, not from the state's perspective. Town meeting is.
I would just say that...
I mean, there's, there's different rules between elected and appointed.
We need to, just looking at time, I think we can, yeah. I'm running out of words on this one. So it's a complex issue.
I think we have enough for one, for the, this next round of revisions. And if you, between now and like two weeks, you know, from now, in the next round, when you're re-doing it again, you can have, you know, fine-tune that piece. I think that makes sense.
Was there, was there something else other than that?
Um, the only other thing that came in, um, uh, near the end of last week was a member of FinCom with some initial, um, that, uh, some initial comments that got, um, forwarded to Jennifer Goldson. It was to focus on kind of some top, whether it's five or more, you know, five, top five-ish goals and those activities they expect to happen in the next two fiscal years. So they're, they're looking more towards, uh, organization of a timeline with very specific, um, types of projects. So identify recurring versus one-time expenses, identify capital versus operating expenses, and identify those strategies that will result in additional costs. For example, they said developing a plan for something will probably result in actions that may cost more money. Um, so just kind of organizing those buckets. So that, that was kind of the main...
Yeah, it would be incredibly helpful. I mean, I know you're gonna take this and put it into the back in the format that you...
Yeah.
This is just how... This is just how we're reviewing it before you go into that format. But it would be very helpful if you had a, um, a log. Without all the language and everything, so it's D one seven point one, and it's just the, you know, update zoning bylaw regulations with modernized and inclusive language. Right? And then it's just listed and then the timeline is next to it, and then maybe they are sorted. Um, by their actual timeline, and but it's also, you know, this is the list of the goals all in one place versus thirty pages.
Yeah, I can talk to that a little bit. Yeah. Yes. One thing that we've talked about internally is sort of having, uh, in the action plan, kind of at the, at the end, sorting it based, like, ba- it's kind of what you're talking about, like different by, like, uh, these ongoing, like, by timeline, by also the strategy type, so that way, you know, for some people, they're going to want to read through the whole thing, but also I imagine that the planning board, you all will want to be like, okay, well, what are the things that we actually are going to, yeah. Or like, what are all the policy things, I want to look through those really quick. So that's kind of one thing that we're talking about doing, you know, as like, sort of a cross-reference, I guess is the right way to talk about it.
Excel spreadsheet could do it quickly too.
Yeah.
But for the printout.
Yes, yeah.
But yeah, that's, go ahead.
One more, um, so somebody raised this recently and I feel as if I should say, um, a copa, I don't remember how, um, uh, hiring a zoning enforcement officer, did that make it in? Anybody?
A zoning enforcement officer?
No, it did not make it in.
Well, I think that's been a long-term priority for the town and it's been something we've advocated for a long time. So better now than not at all, it's a. Uh, you know, one of the, I guess I'd say this, as much as we've had this, uh, great working group, one of the things that we bring into the whole process is knowing just exactly how the whole permitting process works and what, how, what's the intake, what's the, how, what's the step, the flow chart and so on. And I missed it, so it sounds like I'm not alone, but that is absolutely one of the things we've talked about. We've been, last year at, um, finance committee meeting, we were talking about it, so I think.
Well, it kind of got because, if I remember correctly, the ZBA doesn't want it, is that correct?
Well, that's not.
Kind of a building department really is the one with the ZBL. I think that's.
Yeah, it wouldn't be through ZBA.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I think that's a town manager related issue, I know we've had discussions around that.
Well, we have all sorts of things in there.
Yeah, yeah, no, just historically, we, we did talk about it in the budget and we went around on that and it didn't, didn't percolate up, it didn't percolate up to the top, can't remember.
It's our fault, and I would say there's some other people, and I know where this came from, but I guess I'm not feeling that I was authorized to say. But, um, it's, it's something that we overlooked.
Right, so the.
I don't know if we overlooked it or I reallocated our, I focused on reallocated.
But in the master plan, there are all sorts of positions that I never even thought about. So it's, um, I think right now, master plan has, uh, positions that we, I mean, this is old news for this board, I hope we're, um,
No.
Be doing an about face, I think yes, there's a rationale for why zoning enforcement is not the same as, um, uh, the, the building code and.
Yeah, and then the follow-through and the communication coordination between all the projects and the conditions placed on those projects through zoning.
Right, exactly.
The, my only concern at this stage is how we prioritize that relative to the other positions, because we did actually.
Hasn't, that was put in by the consultants, not by us, and so we can check, question that, but I think let's get it in there.
Oh, no, I just, we, we did have a discussion of prioritizing those positions a few weeks ago.
Yeah, with the master plan steering committee, it was not on there.
Well, it's not too late.
No, I just, that's something.
And we are the, we're the ones who vote and adopt it, and we've been saying it for a long time and I feel as if we left the.
Right, I just that, we need to say something about which posi- if we, if we're given, which position would we want first or second or third?
Well, there are several in there.
Do you have that list, while we're at ended up?
I'm not ready to do that, because there are all sorts of positions.
I was just going to give her a tentative place to put it for right now and then we.
Right, exactly, exactly.
I can pull, you mean the list, how, what the different positions are?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can pull it out of my head in that it's a planner position, a sustainability director, a grants writer, uh, communications and outreach coordinator, and.
There are a lot of positions.
It was, that, that was a sustainability.
Sustainability director, yeah. And then we changed the economic development person to a task force, so there's no new hire, it's just going to be a sort of new committee, I guess, is basically what it is.
I will say this, the zoning enforcement officer, we've always felt, and I do still, that it would be a part-time position. So for anybody care about that, but I don't think we have to solve that right now.
No, but I would probably put it, I would probably put it in more of the three to, three year round versus a zero to three round.
Right.
I don't care.
Uh, that's what I, she needed to know.
Yeah.
More is, and, and that is really to, the goal is to, all we have, we're increasing all the site plan and all the site review and conditions are, and they need to be followed through and communication needs to go through between all the boards.
Well, the reality is a lot of the, um, zoning questions go to Brian and that's really not where they're supposed to land.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's okay in terms of if it's a special permit, then that's really where the town planner comes into play. But that's not what's happening right now, it's more like, what does this mean?
Yeah.
And, um, there should be a zoning enforcement officer.
Um, so in terms of where in the plan you think that should go.
Balance thing.
Yeah, and the part, the.
Develop.
The balance thing. Okay, maybe right, maybe it's like right under, maybe it's in the same one under the planner, yeah.
We'll look at it when you, right, you're authorized, it just should be there.
Um, any other comments that were, John had comments, um.
Um, yeah, those went directly to the consultant.
Yeah. Oh.
It's sad, I mean, do all comments that come in just go in, because certainly ours didn't.
No, they shouldn't, the, that's part of why, uh, you, why you guys are talking about it tonight.
Can you, well, John's here, but, um, can you summarize it?
I think, yeah, John would probably be able to summarize his comments.
John, do you want to?
Are we doing it right now, or is, and again?
Well, we are looking through all the comments we got, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's that, and then, um.
Do you have comments from someone who hasn't been involved in this process for the last five thousand years?
Right, there's that too. Exactly, that's how I would phrase it.
Um, no.
Oh, yeah. Kevin hasn't been involved, I mean, there, there are some.
Yeah, yeah, those are the ones I would highlight.
Those are the ones we talked about, yeah, I mean, in the past, um, two and a half weeks, there, um, we, we have talked about all those comments and those are, so far have been related to, um, the finance committee, which as we talked about very briefly, we're going to be, actually be getting more comments from the finance committee because they met, um, on Monday and reviewed it, um, another, the, um, another round. So the idea is that they're going to have, um, I basically told, told them, you know, kind of as soon as possible. Um, but, so there, we're going to probably be getting a few more comments from FinCom that would, um, getting, that would potentially get incorporated, um, uh, by March sixth, if, if, if that's in time. The other ones were related to the DAC, the Disability Access Commission. Um, and then the one that came in like yesterday or, um, related to ethics, so, yeah.
Uh, and then there was one comment regarding, uh, childcare. Um, but that had to deal with more not an understanding that the whole town, anywhere even in, anywhere can have, um, childcare. It's, it's a completely open everywhere throughout town. Um, it really comes down to, um, the cost of the land to put your childcare facility there. Um, and there's very little we can do for that, but it's zoned right now to allow childcare anywhere in town. Um, and, um, there was a discussion, which it doesn't really fit into the master plan. Kind of does though about retaining teachers, there's discussion about putting a childcare facility at Lynch when it's built, because it will pay for itself, but then also retain teachers, because they can put their kids into that childcare facility. Um, and that is like a benefit to them, but it's, they have, they pay for the childcare, but it's at inside town and it helps retain them, and so it's kind of a thought, maybe that is, uh, feasible since it will pay for itself. And that is, that goes towards more re- teacher retention, um, uh, so that's kind of, that one didn't really have a good fit for the master plan.
Can we, can we get that forwarded to the school committee and whoever's dealing with planning at Lynch?
No, that came from a member of the school committee.
Oh, okay. Good.
She's considering, they're considering it, so it's under consideration as a option, so, um, I, but. Um, so that is, uh, that is that. Um, I have a tremendous amount of comments, I'm going to have Brian copy, because we're going to go into executive, I'll have him copy it and give it to you, and I'll keep one copy and you can have the other, but have fun. So there's a lot of notes and thoughts on my part, um, and I think we're good. Um, thank you everyone for coming, did you want to say anything or just listening or? Oh, thank you for coming, everyone, and thank you for, for your patience for, because we're running behind schedule and I really appreciate it.
And I'm weighing a ten, I'm going to work, you should too.
Uh, okay.
I'll make Kathy's here.
Yes, please. All right. Thank you Anna for coming in and thank you for, and all your comments, you're going to type yours up? And you grab Kathy's, correct, her, okay. Um, wait, was that Kathy's or was that?
No, no, this was, um.
Deborah's.
They have Kathy's.
Kathy's, Kathy's wasn't in email though.
Yeah.